Well, judges, say hi. They don't accept money, so don't try to bribe them. Here we go. Make a nice straight line, guys, so the judges can look at you. Wow. I'd like to welcome everyone here, and if you would, stand so we pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, Mr. Randy Stone will lead us in our invocation.
Let's pray. Our Father, we are thankful today for every blessing. We thank you, Lord, for this caring and loving community that we live in. Thank you, Lord, for the relative peace and tranquility that we enjoy from day to day. Thank you for the beauty of the mountains that surround us. And, Father, we thank you for the prosperity that we seem to be enjoying in abundance at this time. But, Lord, we do pray for those, perhaps, who are not sharing in that prosperity. We pray not only that you would bless them, but we pray that you would reveal to us ways in which we might bless them, especially as we move forward from Thanksgiving to Christmas. Father, we do pray for your guidance. We realize that there are always important decisions to be made, and there are consequences to every decision that is made. So we ask for the wisdom that is from above, which is pure and peaceable. And, Father, we just ask you to guide these on our board, that they might be able to make wise and profitable decisions for each and every one of us in our town. In Christ's name, amen.
Announcements. The first one I'd like to mention is that the DOT is going to have a public meeting on December 13th down at the Lake Tomahawk Park in the Lakeview clubhouse from 4:00 to 7:00. That'll be to discuss the Brewerys Road Interchange. And I'd like to welcome Josh Harold, who is our new town manager. He's been with us before in a different capacity, and we certainly welcome him on board, and he'd be a great asset for this town. I have some proclamations to read. One is Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas now Arbor Day is observed throughout the nation and the world, whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, countless other wood products, and whereas trees in the town of Black Mountain increase property values, increase the economic viability of business areas and beautify our community. Whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Don Collins, the Board of Aldermen of the town of Black Mountain here proclaim December 1st, 2018, as Arbor Day. We have another proclamation for one of our special folks here in this town, and I've asked Mr. Carlos Showers if he would read that proclamation for us.
I've always been a firm believer that our senior citizens in town give true treasures of any town because they have the knowledge and the wisdom of things that have happened and have brought forth their knowledge and wisdom to their offspring, to their grandchildren, to the great-grandchildren, to the great-great-great-grandchildren. But one of those people, a gentleman by the name of Mr. William Marvin Hamilton. Mr. Hamilton lives, he's 93 years old, and he passed away a couple of weeks ago. But keeping in line with what I feel is, you know, recognizing our Jews in the community. I've asked that the proclamation be done for Mr. Hamilton. And I'm trying to read it. Still getting on the flow here. Whereas William Marvin Hamilton referred to here after as Marvin Hamilton as a native of Black Mountain. And whereas William Marvin Hamilton has been a lifelong member of Mills Chapel Baptist Church, where he participated in community projects, served as a Sunday school teacher and superintendent, was a member of the Board of Trustees and layman's league, and later became a beacon. Whereas Marvin Hamilton was instrumental in facilitating the purchase and development of a community baseball field which served the Craigmont neighborhood children, of which he coached for many years. And whereas Marvin Hamilton proved invaluable service to the Swanola Valley Christian ministry, dedicating over 28 years of service as chaplain and ente de la monster. Whereas Marvin Hamilton began a 43-year career in manufacturing and beacon, establishing a lifelong friendship with Charles D. Owen. And whereas Marvin Hamilton was a loving father to his wife, Mrs. Eileen Hamilton, the father of William Hamilton, a brother to John Hamilton, who, by the way, was the first African-American to service Alderman for the town of Black Mountain. Whereas Marvin Hamilton was a humble and graceful man with a yielding commitment to his faith in God, church, family, and friends, and his pride, selfless service to others by bringing community and visitors together in his home, sharing meals and laughter. Now, therefore, I, Don Collins, Mayor of the town of Black Mountain, on behalf of the Board of Aldermen, and citizens of Black Mountain, wish to honor and do hereby proclaim November 19th, 2018, as William Marvin Hamilton, day in Black Mountain. This is Vicney Lighto. This is Mr. Hamilton's niece. And I, on behalf of the Board and citizens of Black Mountain, present this.
I'm not a speaker. I wish one of my cousins was here, but we're not. I'd like to thank you for recognizing my uncle, Marvin. It is my honor to accept this award on behalf of the entire Hamilton family. Thank you.
Okay. Now, there's folks out there that need seats. We've got several up here. Come forward. We've got several speakers on the one topic, and that's the topic of tennis courts. I will ask if you can have select one person among you, and I'm going to give you an extra two minutes, a total of five minutes, to discuss that situation. So y'all be thinking about that. And then the first speaker that we have is Sharon Horn. Come up to the front, please, ma'am. Give your name and your address.
She's right there at the podium. My name is Sharon Horn, and I don't know if it's on the agenda, and I can ask this question. I'd like to know, what is the status of the daycare center?
I don't know that the status has changed at all.
What is the newest status? Has the grant been approved or not? The big grant.
Mr. John DeWitt is back there in the back. I think he can answer those questions for you. You can get with him afterwards after the meeting because he's going to certainly know more about that situation than we are.
Thank you.
All right. Karen Edwards. Ms. Karen, if you'll give us your name and address, please.
I'm Karen Edwards, and I live at 3 Leeds Lane in Black Mountain. And I wouldn't be here if we had control of our HOA, but we don't, and we don't know when we will. So I'm here to address the Airbnb problem that we have, hoping that we can get some satisfaction, possibly through the town of Black Mountain. I'm going to read this because I can't retain all the points I want to bring out. "I'm here to address the short-term rental problem in Tudor Croft. I have emailed all of you and provided you pictures and problems that have occurred most recently. Our builders have not protected us, and as you know, our homes are very close, whereas as close as 15 feet or less, and the streets are narrow, and we are the only community with a zero setback between our homes in Black Mountain. I have a statement from Robyn Hager at 35 Tudor Way. She was not able to attend tonight. Here's what she said. I was looking for a safe haven and a home I can call my permanent residence. I purposely did not build in other areas because I knew they already were allowing Airbnbs. I thought by building in a subdivision under covenants and homeowners association that the owners would make certain to protect our privacy and provide security to one another. And I believe the same. The covenant state number two of our covenants, single-family residential use, all lots shall be used for, improved for, and devoted exclusively to single-family residential use. Number 13, trader business, no trader business shall be carried upon any lot or tract. This restriction shall not prohibit a home occupation which does not cause any noxious or offensive activity which does not significantly increase traffic within the property." I assure you, we've had both. "Since the writing of this covenant, our builders have decided to support short-term rentals. They did not take into consideration the concerns of our current homeowners and the problems we have had and continue to encounter. We have concern for our property values. Having an Airbnb next door reduces my property value, leaves me feeling unsafe, and I've worked so hard to have what I hope to have for my future. I do not feel it is peaceful anymore. People are in and out. They are strangers. There are parking problems. There is garbage, and there is noise. If my chosen home for retirement continues to be next to an Airbnb, I will probably sell. But how do I sell? Those that know I have an Airbnb next door will want to either not buy or offer, much less for my property. If I don't disclose there is an Airbnb next door, do I get sued? If I do disclose, then my property value goes down. The Airbnb owners next door from Atlanta, they own and rent several properties as their profession. They are nowhere near to monitor, do not know the people they are renting to, and can't solve immediate problems when they are four hours away."
Ms. Edwards.
I'm sorry.
We have only three minutes.
Oh, I've already got three?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
All right.
Thank you. Marilyn, I'm assuming you're going to speak under Old Business? And Mr. Boldea, you're going to speak during the discussion on the First Street? And Shane, you want to discuss, have your discussions when we bring up by the road closure?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Tennis court. Have y'all decided who will come and speak on y'all's behalf?
The new reset is set at 8:50.
All right. Thank you very much. Black Mountain currently has two tennis facilities in Black Mountain. We have the first, which is Craigmont Park, which was purchased in 1933 and served until 1978 as our youth center. Many of us growing up in that period of time remember that very well. In 1978, the park was updated through a land and water conservation grant for recreational purposes, and I'm not exactly sure when the lower courts were originally built, but I can safely say it's been 40 years since the renovations have taken place there. There are no lights at the lower courts. The Lake Tomahawk Park has served as the primary courts for many years. These courts have been resurfaced and maintained primarily by BMTA and the Black Mountain Parks Interact. All of this to say, it's time that Black Mountain Tennis was put on our budget for the 2020 fiscal year. We've, in 2007, we were, they drew up a plan, a proposed plan, for the tennis courts to resurface the two upper courts and build four courts down below. As a current member of the Black Mountain Tennis Association, I play on several USDA teams, and the United States Tennis Association is the only, serves about 300,000 tennis players in the United States, and we are a part of that. Black Mountain has several leagues that played during that time. Tennis brings a positive impact to our community. When the USDA teams play, we bring people from Hendersonville, Brevard, Asheville, and other surrounding areas, and the courts presently are a little bit of an embarrassment when our opponents come to play. We have huge cracks, and Mr. Showers was very kind to go out with duty to see those courts and the condition that they're in. The drainage is very poor, and we have spoken to the town manager in the past about going ahead and making that a priority for us. Black Mountain's been my home for 57 years. I take pride in our town, and we can have better tennis facilities, and our town deserves better tennis facilities. Please give this line item serious thought as you prepare your budget for June. BMTA will be there to support and do anything we can to help. We want to thank the Board, Carlos Showers, for your time, Mayor Collins for listening and helping us continue to serve, no pun intended, the tennis population here in our town. Just a little bit of research that I did was that it takes approximately $6,900 on a national average to build a court, and to resurface them is not that much. USDA does have some money, I mean, Black Mountain TA has some money to put toward that, which, through all of our things that we do to support the town. When we bring these tennis matches into town, we do, you know, they go out to eat here. They provide our restaurants with a lot of money. But tennis in general is a very healthy way to build our community. It boosts the commerce and the culture. It rebuilds our community. It brings communities together. It attracts our league play, which in turn increases our economic impact through the food and retail. And it also increases Black Mountain as a town for national exposure, as a tourist attraction. And there, if you drop by the tennis courts any given day, you'll see many of our members there. And just very quickly, I want to ask that all of our members stand up that are here tonight to support the courts and are there many days. Some of these people play two or three times a week in the mornings. But it's, there's been a lot of people, Jimmy McSwain, for one, put a lot of time into those courts, brought a lot of happiness to a lot of people, and is a big, big part of Black Mountain. So we ask you, as the Board, to please take serious consideration into putting us into your line item for the 2020 budget. Thank you very much.
There's no more citizen comments than, other than you and Old Business? Okay? All right. Next, we'll have communications from boards and permissions agencies, and Mr. Steve Jones, if you will come.
I wasn't expecting such a big crowd for my last one, so I might have to talk longer. I've got several things I want to talk about. First off, I wasn't sure that we were going to get our insurance rating back before I retired, and I'm glad we did. When I started in the fire department, Gary Barlet was the fire chief, and he instilled in us that our rating is the way that we're judged as firemen, how we give fire protection. So we always strive to improve that rating. I think Gary took us from a six to a four. It was probably the biggest jump. Matt Kirkpatrick took us probably from a nine to a six. And I'm very pleased to say, all y'all already know this, that starting February 1, we'll Black Mountain Fire Department be rated as a Class III. That don't mean a whole lot to the people sitting out here because they don't, they don't understand it. They weren't raised around it. So, and I could take, next week, try and explain it, and I'd mess it all up because it's a numbers game. It's all about formulas, and that'd be something Mr. Harrison, Dean Libby would have to do. So I'm not going to try to do that. We're rated on five different areas. Water flow. I'll give you an example. Every building that the Department of Insurance picks, there's a formula to figure what, how much water it'll take to put that fire out. It's gallons per minute. So we're rated on those. Nanas, the old, up on Montree Road, I think it's no longer there. It had such a high fire flow that we couldn't get enough water out of the hydrants system in that area to provide the water flow. So we had to go to an alternate method, which is hauling water, and we don't see that much in Black Mountain because we have hydrants everywhere. But that one building had such a flow, and if, to get to another line to draw water off of it, it'd been too far to go. So we're graded on water flow. We're graded on the fire department, and that includes our staffing, our training, our, even our geographic distribution of fire companies. So we have a fire station here in the main. We've got a substation on White Pine Drive and another substation in Law Ridge. Those are all strategically placed to get us within so many miles of a residence. We are not at the max, like, to get a Class 1, you'd have to have a fire station wherever, within a mile and a half, I believe it is, of every residence in the district. Black Mountain just can't afford to do that. So we realize that, but we're graded on that as well. We're graded on water supply, and that's why you see us out here inspecting them, cleaning around them, painting them. They grade us on that stuff. So that's what we have to do so many a year to get full credit for that, and we do that. Along with Jamie's crew, did it for the last four or five years. The fire department just recently took that back over, and not that they were doing anything wrong, that we found out that by the firemen not doing them, they weren't as familiar with hydrants and their locations in the fire district. So that makes more sense that they get out and see where that's at. We're graded on community risk and reduction. That's why we have fire prevention, fire enforcement, public education, and fire investigation. We're graded on all that as well. So when you see us at the schools or you have tours at the station, that all adds into that grading. And then, that's the five areas. The area for most improvement for us was within the fire department because the Department of Insurance, an ISO, says the town of Black Mountain has three engine companies because we have three stations. Each engine company is a minimum of four people. So that's 12 people, I believe, if my math is right, would be 12 people per shift plus a battalion chief, and now we're only running seven. So to get full credit, we would have to improve, keep improving the staffing, which we've improved since 2007, and like I said, we always try to strive to move forward. So everyone who takes my position will be the same thing. They'll be coming asking you for more staff, and that's why they'll be doing it, because the Department of Insurance says that we need more staff. We don't have a ladder truck, so we got gigged for that. We do have one next door to us in Swanola, but we don't get full credit for that. To get full credit, you have to have your own ladder truck. You have to have a reserve ladder or a reserve service truck, which a service truck can be a truck with a bunch of portable ladders on it, not exactly a truck that you see run around, a ladder truck run around. So all those things are the ways to improve the next rating schedule. Training, we lack in the training area, just for the simple fact, the training is so hard anymore, we need a full-time training officer. I've asked for that a couple of times in my career, but I get asked this by every manager. You've got to prioritize what you need and, you know, have to prioritize, and I need more people to work staff. So in the very near future, the fire department needs a training officer, somebody that's dedicated full-time to do nothing but train your firefighters, because that's what keeps them alive, and that's what keeps people alive in safety. So that pretty much covers that part of it. Does he may have any questions about the rating?
Yeah, I do. What is, we moved from a four to a three.
Okay.
What does that do for the local homeowner in this town?
Absolutely nothing.
Okay. What does that do for the downtown businesses?
That could, that depends. That would depend on how much their business. It depends on how much, like, I couldn't tell you, it's not a set number. It would be, you know, the number for Tysons would be different than somebody on Cherry Street that owned an antique store because the businesses valued it more. I think, I'm not even going to guess. You have to get up to the insurance guy, but it only helps the business owners, and it is a good tool to draw business into the town because it does lower their insurance rating. That does save them money in the long run.
Or any other, Ashville Fire Department, any other fire departments you're aware of in western North Carolina? Where are they in their rankings to what you, what you know?
We're pretty, we're consistent. I mean, I believe we're bills a three. If they're not, they'll go to a three, probably.
What about Asheville?
I think they're a two, or maybe, they may be going to a one, but you.
It's a location, density and location.
And I'm not going to say we'll never get there because in 100 years, we may.
Right.
But you have to be accredited. You have to have all this stuff that I, as the fire chief, realize the town of Black Mountain can't afford.
Can't afford it. But Asheville's maybe, maybe a one, but.
They may be heading that way.
But I think density has a lot to do with that.
Yes.
If you've got to have a station within, you know, close to a mile.
Charlotte, Greensboro, and Raleigh are all ones. So, and Charlotte's got a fire department within a mile and a half of every residence in their district. So that's huge. I would love to have that, but, you know, I've got to prioritize every year, so, and I've got to compete with five other departments for money. So I realize that. A couple other things, well, actually, three more things. I want to talk to you for a minute about something that we've done good, and I'm very proud of, the fact that we found the money to do this. Cancer is killing firemen every year, more and more every year, and it's because of the environment that we're in. How many people's ever been into a fire station and seen the bunker gear, fireman's bunker gear, sitting there on the floor with their gear pulled down, where they can step in their boots, pull the gear up and go? Everybody seen that? Well, that's killing firemen. And what it's doing is it's putting carcinogens from the exhaust from fire trucks, which we have years ago got an exhaust system. So we started combating that a long time ago. Well, turnout gear is the number one way that we, that firemen get cancer. And until mid-year, Dean, about May or June, probably May, all we had was the same washer and dryer that you have in your home, and it did absolutely nothing for your gear, I can tell you that. So we bought a commercial extractor and a commercial dryer to clean our firemen's gear, and I was amazed at the water that came out of that washer from washing one set of turnout gear that went into one fire. set of turnout gear that went into one fire. If that gear had been in three or four fires, it'd have been a whole lot dirtier. So, I had them wash it, then I had them wash it again, and that's how clean it comes. That's the second time they washed the water. So, y'all can give yourself a pat on the back because y'all were part of that. If we hadn't have been able to buy a brand-new fire truck, and Dean and I hadn't have been able to save enough money, we wouldn't have been able to afford that. So, that's the one time that we get to pat ourselves on the back because we're combating what we're doing killing our firemen. And I didn't realize it, it was that bad. I grew up in a, in a fire department where you didn't wear air packs. I can remember Weldon Presley, if anybody in this room ever knew Weldon Presley, picked me up by my coat and my pants one day and just throw me into Vernon Building with nothing on, and all I had in my hands was a water hose, and him standing at the door hollering, "Get it, boy, get it." So, so we've come a long way since then. And the route, the routes that it gets us is around their neck, and around their wrists, and around their pants. I'm six foot three, and for years, I wore a pair of 30-inch long pants. So, when I got on the ground and crawled around, my pants hocked up around the top of my boot, so, but that's, that's how it's getting it. And we order custom length pants now, so people don't have to crawl around with their legs showing. So, we've done a great job at combating that. But I can tell you what's coming to you, it won't be from me, but we need two sets of turnout gear for every fireman. We need two sets of hoods, two sets of gear. Now, the reason for that is, is it's not uncommon for these guys to go out to more than one fire in a shift. When I started working, if we had one fire a month, we were doing good. If we had five calls a week, we were doing good. Now, we're averaging 10 to 12 calls a day. So, these guys need two sets of turnout gear, and they're not cheap. We just bought eight sets of turnout gear, full sets, and it's right at $20,000 again, $19 something. So, it's not cheap. So, it's not going to be something we can just, we have the budget for it, I mean, we all know that. But that's, that's, that's what's needed to help combat cancer in firemen. So, I would like to see that, I'd like to see somebody on the board to get behind that and stick with it, because it's, it's killing firemen left and right faster than we can count. The next topic I want to talk about is killing firemen and suicide. Firefighters are five times more likely to commit suicide than anybody else in the country. Fred came and talked to me last week, and he asked me, he said, "Chief, I want to know about some good things in your career." That's not what I remember. I remember holding an infant, doing CPR, and handing it back to his mother in color. I saw her. I remember holding a family member in my arms, watching her die. Those are the things firemen remember. I've had a coworker that's committed suicide, and I don't know whether it was related to firemen or not. I've went to an active shooter at Drexel, me and Tim Raven was the first two in the building. The stuff that firemen see, not, everybody don't see that stuff, and we see it from beginning to the end. We go there when it starts, and we may leave, but we have to go back when, when the air belt's done and clean it up. And this is killing firemen. Alone in California, of these last two fires, there was five firemen committing suicide. I mean, it's just, that's just the way it is. Now, what do we do to combat that? Well, number one, we have to help, we've got to be able to recognize the problem. Not just say, "I've got an employee census program." But, I mean, we've done our part, that's what we did for years. We've got to tap into these firefighters and see what, like, what hobbies they have. When they're at work, they need to be doing more than just working, they need to be, they go out here and fight a fire, or they go out here and see a bad call, they need to be able to come back and de-stress, not have to worry about changing oil in a truck, or, like you go over right now, they're trying to fix an old washing machine. So, these are things that the town can do to help these firemen, get this, clear their mind, and they have problems just like everybody else. Every firefighter over there works more than one job. They have the same problems that everybody else has at home, with their kids, they're no different than anybody else. The difference is, their job is way more stressful than anybody else's job. It's just the way it is. So, not everybody's meant to be a fireman. I've watched people, good people, come to the fire department and leave because it was too stressful. And it's just not, not everybody's made for it, but we've got to do a better, a better job at recognizing this and helping these people get through these bad days. And then, lastly, and I'll get off my soapbox, this is probably longer than I've ever given any, any report in a, in a, in a month or a year. So, for the last two years, there's been legislation to give firemen a supplemental retirement, just like the law enforcement gets. And for some reason, we can't get anybody in Raleigh to do anything. And it's, it's time that the local level steps up and starts doing something for these people. The League of Municipalities won't sit, they sent a letter here last year telling you that it was going to be $3 million to do this, because it's not, it's an unfunded mandate. Okay, number one. That's not true. Mr. Harris, you run the numbers, I've listened to you for a long time, and I don't know the numbers, but I'm challenging you to look and see what it costs a town of Black Mountain to offer the same supplemental retirement to our firefighters that it does the law enforcement. It's only fair. So, that's all I have, and I enjoyed my time with the town, and I appreciate you listening to me, and I hope that you take to what I, some of what I said, and think about it really hard, because nobody works harder than your firefighters do. Thank you.
All right. On now to the consent agenda. Josh, if you'll...
All right, you've got your adoption of minutes. October 4, 2018, agenda session, as well as October 8, 2018, regular session. 5B, you've got a budget amendment for sprinkler system at 304 Black Mountain Avenue, could be FY 2019-7. The sprinkler system is going to run around $125,000. We had original budget of $50,000 to do some upgrades to the building for its current use, we've only spent $25,000 of that. So, we'd like to use $25,000 of that's remaining to help fund this. The remaining $100,000 balance will come from $50,000 from fund balance appropriated, and $50,000 will come from reducing original amount budget for the water gun, for general water on replacement. 5C, which is a call for public hearing for text amendments, the notices of violations, the warning letters, which would be a 0-18-08. Planning staff and the town attorney would like to request an addition, some language to this. Currently, the planning staff and the planning board did vote on an amendment that you see in front of you, which really takes out one sentence at the end and adds shall. Would also like to see, at the end of the sentence that we're adding shall, we would add unless the act in violation of the code creates an imminent risk of harm to persons or property. 5D is a call for public hearing for text amendments for purpose licenses, for building permits. This is something that was pretty much done over in 2015 by the General Assembly. Our code still has it, in fact, in black and white, so we're requesting for that to be removed from the code. 5E, hope I don't mess this one up, Dean will tell me if I do, but this is a budget amendment for automatic reed water meters. Currently, we've got about 50 of these in place, and we've had these in place for a year or two, from what I understand. This will be for approximately 3,500 more of these automatic reed water meters. I think we had talked about a few years ago, doing $125,000 a year, kind of on a five-year plan to replace all of these water meters. So, what we are asking you to do is to transfer the $125,000 out of the Water Capital Reserve Fund back into the water fund, so we can start spending this money and getting these meters in the ground. And that would be it through the consent agenda.
Got motion to approve consent items A through E as presented. All in favor? Any opposed? Passes 4-0. And we'll have system comments for new or unfinished business only. And... Mayor Lynn?
Good evening to everyone, mayor, board, staff, citizens, and concerned others. Mr. Mayor, you conclude your introduction on the town's homepage with the statement, "I invite you to be a part of making Black Mountain's future a bright one." I do believe that at least part of what you mean by that is you'd like to see citizens become involved. Providing input is one way we can do that. I am choosing to be involved this moment by standing before you to offer my perspective and input because I believe in the value of doing so. We all have our blind spots. I know I do. Many of us kid ourselves at times. I admit to doing that sometimes, too. If we each offer our perspectives and insights, helping to see around our blind spots and discern truth, we can begin to see our path forward together more clearly. After watching the relevant portion, meaning relating to the elections, as that's what I'm addressing, of the September and October meeting videos over and over, again and again, it is my sense that this matter is not about saving money. You say it is, but when you juxtapose an estimated, in a rough figure, of 9,000 to 12,500 in savings every other year, if you switch over to even year elections, that pales compared to being what is drawn from the fund balance yearly to balance the golf fund deficit, nearly 72,290,000 in each of the last several years. Roughly 1,700 to 1,800 people voted in the last several municipal elections. There are 77 annual pass members at the golf course, and then you have however many day passes and other individuals. Elections are important matters. They are integral to our form of government. Voters, not the board, and our board currently is not truly representative because two of you are appointed, should make such a decision as to whether they want to vote at the same times that approximately 30 other positions are, are voted on, on the ballot, on those even years, or focus solely on choosing quality candidates for our town leaders in the odd years. So, I feel having a referendum on the ballot in 2019 is really the desirable way to solve the question, and I would accept whoever would be the outcome of that vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Andrew on First Street, road closures. Well, we'll, go ahead. Go ahead.
There's going to be a public hearing on that.
If you want to do that, then that, you speak now or speak later? And I'm assuming that the, Shane, you want to do the same thing when it comes to Wolford? All right. All right, we'll go on to unfinished business. Bring the wholesale purchase of water from the city of Asheville. Dean, if you will, brief us a little bit.
So, this has been, this has been an issue that's been talked about for some time now, at least a year, it's been pretty, you know, heavily talked about, and the reason I'm up here tonight is I've been asked to sort of spell out some kind of key numbers and some key dates. The reason this really becomes important is because, like, the town right now produces about 500,000 gallons a day from its wells, and we purchase about 200,000 gallons a day from the city of Asheville. And the wells have pretty much reached their limit, so we're not going to get any more water from those wells. And there's a little bit of fear that if some of those wells start to dry out, we have to get more water. We're also taking on 600 new customers, and the Avada new, the Avada business down at the Commerce Park, that's going to increase our water needs. Asheville has a lot of water, and we are going, right now, we have a capacity that we can buy up to 200,000 gallons a day. We've only, the last 12 months, we've actually only purchased 146,000 gallons a day. But a new pump station is being built, some new water lines are being put in, we're going to be able to up that capacity. And the time, and the question really is, when do we want to do that? For each 50,000 a day increase that we have, our fixed costs to Asheville go up $1,000 a month. So, if we just went up to 300,000 gallons a day, we would be paying an extra $2,000 a month to the city of Asheville, just in fixed costs for this water. So, I've given the board a sheet with a bunch of interesting numbers. Once this pump station, I'm not going to go through all of them, but I'm willing to take questions. The pump station is scheduled to be completed about a year from now, December of 2019. Once that gets completed, we will be able to purchase 750,000 gallons of water a day from Asheville if we chose to. Let's see, in, in the last 12 months, we paid Asheville about $144,000 for the water that we are purchasing. $58,000 of that was in fixed cost. Avada is expected to use 25,000 gallons a day once they get up and running. Other businesses will probably come to that Commerce Park, and we, you know, we don't know what type of businesses those are, but they could use substantial amounts of water. Once the 600 new residential customers come onboard from Asheville, we're estimating that they will use about 90,000 gallons of water a day. So, really, if both Avada and those customers, you know, were coming on next week, we would be needing to increase our capacity with Asheville right now, tonight. But those customers cannot come on until this pump station is completed, which is going to be a year from now. So, this has been all, I mean, and this, you know, the pump station has been, we've been talking about this, I think we broke ground on that in September of 16, was it, Larry, did that sound right?
Broke ground on what?
On the Avada project.
No, I mean, they, you mean they had, they had the ground breaking. Yes, yeah. They had a ceremony over there. Yeah, they're going to start construction sometime in the winter.
Yeah, 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 but, you know, we were out there, yeah, this has been, you know, we've known about this topic for close to two years because there was a big, a lot of important people were out there, and, you know, we, so we knew this was all going to be happening. But, let's see, on page two, so right now, the plan is that of these 600 customers, they're really broken into two different phases, and the first phase of 300 customers is scheduled to come onboard in May of 2020. We're thinking that'll be about six months after the pump station is completed, and the second phase would come on... second phase would come on in May of 2021. So those are sort of the important numbers and dates. I don't, you know, this sort of ties into what Ron is going to talk about a little bit later, but if the board has any questions, or if I didn't get to anything?
Well, I think the only thing I was looking for tonight, which you provided, it's not so much the timing, because we've always known the timing is something we keep our eye on, but we don't need to, we don't need to start buying it today. But the number is what I was, what I wanted to get out to the public a bit and for us to start thinking about. So the number at a minimum, it seems to me, of additional purchase is about 150, and that's at the minimum.
That would be an accurate, that would be an accurate number.
So probably what we-
150,000 gallons per day.
Per day, 150.
Yeah.
And so, so the timing we can work on, but the number that we have at a minimum is 150, and while we're already purchasing, and I think you have to say 200, because we need padding.
Yep, absolutely, yeah.
Because I think we've said this before in our public meetings, but that number's averaged 144, but it's been higher in the past, hasn't it?
Yeah, Larry's absolutely right. The last 12 months, it's averaged 144,000 dollars, 144,000 gallons a day. If I was up here about nine months ago, given that same number, it was about 180,000 gallons a day. So it's, it's gone down for some reasons we know about, some we don't know about.
Right. So I think, and we don't, I know we've got other things on the agenda, but I think what I wanted to get out tonight is that the amendment would be, we'll still, we have an agreement to do 200, that we were amending. And so we need to add, in the amendment, we need to at least add 150.
At a minimum, I would-
At a minimum. We probably need to add more than that. That's what we need to be playing around with in our minds, and then we'll, we'll pursue and finalize the agreement. Let me, Ron, one question about the, the current agreement and the amendment, and this would be, this would be, we amended it not that long ago, right? We're, this is like the third or fourth amendment.
Well, we're talking two different things. Dean's got the how much water we're going to buy, and I've got the when we're going to use it.
Right, right.
But I can't, I don't recall when was the last time we amended our purchase agreement for water for the city of Asheville.
That's right. It was the, it was the lines we were working on.
The days, if that's what I'm working on that we're doing.
But we can amend, we have a purchase agreement that we'll be amending, right?
Correct.
And in the current one, is there an escalation clause, like if we use so much?
No, it will bump, I can turn to increments, but if we overshoot our 200,000 for three months.
I think it was three consecutive months, then they automatically bump you up.
They'll bump us up to the next one.
So if we can get, if we can get that, continue that language, we could commit to the 350, and then, and if the escalation language works, it gives us that, gives us a little insurance.
Yeah, it'll bump up. I think the, the concerns you addressed in the past was the what-ifs. So much, there's so much industrialization, for instance, that takes more water, we start pushing Asheville's limits, then we want to buy more capacity we have immediate use for. The word, the city of Asheville right now, that's not a big word. They're not, they're not at a quarter of their capacity.
Yeah, just so that, we've said this before in a public meeting as well, but that Asheville water system has a day, and this is gallons per day. It's like 40, 40-ish million a day, and they, they use half of that. So the capacity in the Asheville system is incredible. The other thing I'd want, and I know we have other things to do, but this is, water's a pretty big deal, the, you know, this is good news, because the well system that we had is just was, is getting stretched to its limit. We haven't, we haven't dug a productive new well in 20-plus years, I believe that's correct. So the opportunity that we have in front of us with the new pump station that's being paid for, for the Avotum project, but we also benefit from it, it's being paid for by, with grant funds, it's on the agenda a little bit later on, like a million and a half dollars worth, that gives us the capacity to buy pretty much the water we'll need for the long, long term in Black Mountain. It's our water, it's, sort of solves the water production problem for, you know, for decades and decades, and probably realistically for a long period of time, what we have to keep our eye on is any growth in the system and what we might need to do. But you know, it's a water system which is set apart, and it's run on its own, so it's handled by rates, and that's how it works. But I, I think it's important for the public to get a handle on, have that information just because it's an essential part of, of what the town does for you, so.
Any other discussion? I'd like to ask if we want to just leave this on until next month, if we just rescind it and bring it back up when it's time to make that decision as far as the wholesale purchase of water.
This probably makes sense. We could just bring it back on when we need to. I'm fine with that. Do I need, do we need to take a motion to, to do that, or just, when we're doing the agenda next month, leave it off?
Just instruction to the downtown manager, keep it on the agenda?
You can just keep it on the agenda, and we just pass over it every month, that'd be fine.
All right.
That's fine. I think I just send do that, we know we got to do it.
Okay. Request to acquire Blue Ridge Assembly Drive water line from the city of Asheville. Transfer.
Okay, that's my part.
Yep.
And I'll back up a little bit, a little bit of history is, a lot of history. For 20-some years, or longer, let's make that 40-some years, my memory, the town has been looking to acquire all the city of Asheville water lines that lie within our city limits. City of Asheville wasn't real interested in it till that system started to get quite aged, and they don't have the capability of really serving that system very well. They can't get the water flow to it. When the Avotum project came along, and we're going to have this pump station that suddenly gives us the ability to move a lot of water, the city of Asheville's attitude changed for whatever reason, and they proposed to, or agreed to, turn over certain lines of the town of Black Mountain, to the town of Black Mountain. That was first set out in two phases. There was a map, I'm not going to do the full thing, but one to have been completed next month, and the next phase to be completed a year from next month, and that's obviously not going to happen. There is a section of line on Blue Ridge Assembly Drive that town can serve right now, simply by tapping into our 10-inch line on Blue Ridge Road. That can be done. Town's, the city is agreeable to that, and the city said, rather than break that out, can we just revise the entire agreement to reflect where we are right now? So the proposal before us is to amend the agreement to take, call Phase One, take over the Blue Ridge Assembly Drive lines, be done by end of May next year. Take over the Phase One, which is the lines in that general vicinity, May of 2020, and then take over that third section in, in May 2021. The agreement is relatively short. The change to the agreement is very basic. City of Asheville hasn't adopted that, and I, it just sort of went silent, but I attribute that to the lack of a city manager, lead city attorney at the moment. But I think the city of Asheville will address it and approve this next month. My recommendation is that we put it on the agenda for approval next month also, and I'll inform the city of that, so they don't get a sleep on it.
Is that, is that required?
Or a motion?
I don't think so.
Roger, remember how many customers were we talking about?
600, 600, no, 600.
Six hundred.
But that's not all on the Blue Ridge Assembly Drive.
No, Blue Ridge Assembly Drive is, I don't know, less, probably 100 or less. First, all of Phase One was roughly 300, all of the, the old Phase Two, now Phase Three is possibly up to 300.
Now, refresh my memory, Blue Ridge Assembly Drive, it was always on, it was part of the 600?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We didn't, we're not taking any more of the service, just spread them out three phases instead of two.
Yeah. Ron, explain to me exactly why you would like for us to wait until December to do this again.
You don't have to. I, I believe it's just approval of this amendment, you could do that this evening if you wanted to.
I'd like to go ahead and do that this evening, go ahead and get this taken care of because it's-
We're going to do it.
Yeah. I'd make a motion to approve the agreement as, as you, as you presented it to us.
All righty. Or is there any discussion? All right, we'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes four oh.
I'll inform the city of Asheville, it's in their lap.
Okay, buddy.
And again, we've got those logistics we need to get started on so that everything can turn over in May.
All right.
Got to work.
All righty. Resolution for the charter amendment for even-year elections, we're on again.
Okay.
You have in your pact and a resolution to ask the legislature to pass a local act changing our election cycle to even-year instead of odd-year. And I've worded that so that it sets out where the terms end. It literally will add one year to the term of everybody who's in office at this point. Trying to address some of what, one of requests from Marilyn and some concerns that I've heard, is one, can we do it?
Can you simply do it by ordinance, or can you do it by referendum? The statute says the way a referendum works is if the board passes an ordinance but doesn't make it effective, and then either it rolls over into a referendum, or a certain number of the citizens can petition and make it a referendum. The problem is, 168-101 of general statutes has this laundry list of things that cities have and do. And 168-102 sets out, it says you can change your charter provisions that you just talked about 101, by ordinance or referendum. Your election cycle is not in that section. Your election cycle is in Chapter 163A, which says that municipal elections will be held every two years beginning in 1973. You're stuck with the odd-year elections without a charter amendment of the legislature. How do you start that? A number of ways. We're, you guys are looking at doing it by resolution, you could probably just do it by voice, vote, and a letter to the legislature, make a phone call to John Egger's office. The next concern of citizens is probably is sort of out of our hands now. What if we want to make a comment? Now, this board can, has the choice of hearing citizens, as you have the ability to come into citizen comments, say we like it or we don't like it. You have the ability to do more if you like about getting citizen input. Once it's in the hands of the legislature, and as you folks know, I cheat, I met with Anna Sterns Saturday night to discuss this, she worked in the legislature for three years. And the process is, once you pass it off, they actually have folks who write the bill, and then it goes to committee and works its way through. The opportunities for public input are small. Those are before committee. Now, you can get, I will give the website address in a minute, but anybody, if it goes that far, if you want to follow it, you can actually go online, pick those committees, send them a message by, from their link on the internet, and say, I want to, I want to be notified by email of every committee meeting, and what's going to be on the agenda. The part you're not going to like is, in a local government, we have to give at least 48 hours of anything this board does, at least. Those committees can meet on three hours' notice. That means you can get an email with not enough time to drive to Raleigh. So it's a little limited on your ability to get to them and have your input. But that is the opportunity to be, how you keep track of what they're doing and to know when they're going to meet and discuss it. Once the committee, and there are two committees that are likely to get this, there are 25 or 30 standing committees of the House, which will start it with John Egger's office. But two of them, one of the, either, they're called state and local government committees, and there are two of them. Apparently, they have a lot to stir up. But one of those two committees is likely to be where it would start and the one you want to monitor. If it goes to John Egger and our legislative committee and they start it, I will make sure that that is where it goes, because you guys have seen in the newspaper where something had absolutely nothing to do, the judiciary went to the judicial committee. So we'll kind of monitor that, see if it does go to the local government committee. That's the process. The committee prays over it, passes it on. It's a local act, probably won't bring up a lot of debate on the floor, obviously, it'll be voted. There's a chance that if several municipalities do this and contact legislators, that they may write, you know, have a bill that's local but affects 15 or 20 or 30 or 40 municipalities and do it as a single bill. But nonetheless, once it's in their hands, that all you can do is watch, show the committee meetings, and put your two cents worth in, or make it known to your legislator, obviously. This is a long-year term. That means if it's, there's, you, this type of local bill can be considered by the legislature whether people like it or not, there could be debate, it could be active. In a short term, the legislature will not take on any local acts except totally uncontested acts. So if there's any objections to this, and any arguments over it, anybody, people who want to, especially in the legislature, don't like it one way or the other, then it needs to be done in this upcoming year, and it's long-term. Can I tell you anything more?
The only thing I would add is that Attorney Sneed mentioned Representative Egger, but all of our legislative delegations, or at least Representative Turner and also Senator Van Dyne, were, you know, and were speaking, in speaking to folks in the community, they're not particularly taking, it's not really their place to take a position on these things, but they were very receptive to helping a municipality or supporting a municipality who wanted to do it. That's the reason that I, I asked for the resolution to be drafted, because, and yet, make sure everybody understands, the city of Asheville was mandated to go to even-year elections. And so that's, you know, they're the, obviously, the biggest municipality in the county, and they, they got moved, so they didn't have a choice about it. That's the reason that, you know, the legislative delegation just made sure to let folks know that if they were interested, your municipality was interested, that they would be receptive to trying to, you know, they, I mean, they don't, they don't control everything, but they'll try to do their job and get it introduced and so forth. The only thing I would add, and we've spoken about this maybe at the last two board meetings, I've tried, had an article in the paper and so forth, just asking for input and direction. The only thing I would comment on from my own perspective is that I am supportive of going to even-year elections. And the reason being, I think Marilyn makes a decent point, that it's not, if, if, if we need to have odd-year elections, and that's the best thing for the town, then the financial part of it's not, you know, it just doesn't drive the, doesn't drive the decision. It's a factor, but I don't think it drives the decision. I think we just don't get that much attention to our, to our odd-year elections, because, you know, you're not voting with anybody. You know, the even-year elections, you're either doing your house, you know, house folks in North Carolina, your house folks at the federal level, and then some of the even-year elections, of course, you have presidents, senators, governors. So you have, you have all that focus on the even-year elections, and I think it'll create, has a good opportunity to create more focus and, and energy in our elections. I don't see a downside to it. So that, I'm supportive of it for that reason. I think it, and it does, it does have some offsetting factors as far as cost and so forth, but I'm supportive of it, of the change for that reason.
Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution R-18-24?
So moved.
All right. Now, discussion with the rest of the board.
You know, I'm, I'm going to repeat myself, I'm not going to vote in favor of this resolution. And my reasons have been the same from the beginning. I, I don't, I don't see the, the cost savings being an issue at all in it. I have great concerns over what is termed as ballot fatigue of the cost. It will cost prospective candidates in national and state elections as far as getting their message out. You know, just procedurally, as, as we've had in election, you'll notice the layout of the ballot follows the federal offices, it follows the state offices, the judiciary, it's not two or more. The local elections will be at the bottom of that, and we will have, you know, well, maybe two or more page ballots. These are things that I think people should consider, that, that issue. I have concerns that people won't be able to get as much information if they like in a presidential year in particular. We all know about tax plans, but what will people be doing as far as the neighborhoods and things like that? It'll, it'll put an extra onus on candidates to get out and for citizens to be engaged. I, I think that, and also, I appreciate what Ron has said, I, I feel that the process of not at both the state level now, and ours, of, of not having enough citizen involvement calling for this in the referendum is terribly unfair to people. I think it runs contradictory to what we, what we establish in our organizational chart, which we've got here, where at the very top, everything flows- which we've got here where at the very top, everything flows from the citizens. It flows from the citizens. I think the only way to truly express that is not by five or six people on this board. It's for you to make up your minds, to do your, to do your research and decide in a ballot box, just like our founders have decided, that fundamental principle. For that reason, I'm voting no on this. Because I don't think that it's my place to dictate to you or to the future when we should have elections. It is rightfully your place to dictate to me when that should be.
Any other comments?
If anything will be learned this month, a couple of weeks ago, is that people will educate themselves, people will get out, they'll vote for who they feel is the right person to do the job. I don't think an additional year is going to make a big deal. I don't think the amount of money that's going to be saved is going to make a big deal. I think that people, put people behind these podiums for reasons, and that's because they trust and believe that they're going to be able to make the right decisions according to them or what they elect them for. I've heard all types of different comments being made, conspiracy theories, you know, we want to stay up here so that we can get some extra things done, some things passed. That's, that's far beyond the truth. The fact of the matter is, we're here to serve offices in this town, we're going to do it in the way that we feel best, what you set us up here for. Again, like I said, you know, what happened this month across this nation is a reflection on what people are doing to educate themselves on what the issues are, who the candidates are, and finally want to see things done. If you truly want to make things happen, you truly want to vote for the person that you think is going to do the best good for you. And you can make sure you know who that person is, you're going to vote for them. I support the amendment.
Anyone else? There's a lot of reasons to vote either way on this. The, some of the negatives are, as you are, the focus and attention on your local elections are not as concentrated as it is when we're doing it just on the odd years. But the, some of the pluses are, is you're not going to have signs in the yards for two and three months every single year. You're going to have it at least every other year. It's going to bring more voters out because the even year numbers, they are higher. My concern was, by doing even year, it may be more partisan. But that bird has left the building a long time ago. Last, last year, for example, you had the people on the social media looking up, see how, what primaries people voted on and advise them that these are the Democrats and these are Republicans or these are independents. And shame on them for doing that. This town has always been nonpartisan and we've not got into the political bickering. So, making the tough decisions is what we've been here, what we're, this board is elected for. And this is, some may think it's tough. I just think it makes common sense. I'll call now for, for vote unless anyone's got anything else. All in favor of adopting Resolution R. 18-24?
Aye.
Pass, any opposed?
No.
All right, new business, interlocal agreement with Land of Sky Downtown Parking and Circulation Study. Josh?
A number of months ago, there was some discussion about downtown parking and circulation. What you have before you is a interlocal agreement with Land of Sky Regional Council in the amount of $35,000 total. The town will be, will be responsible for 20% of that, which is $7,000, to take a look at downtown parking and circulation. With the adoption of this agreement, we'll be able to work through an RFP process and select an consultant to start work on this. And we would anticipate probably a three to four month timeframe.
Motion to adopt R. 18-25.
So move.
Any discussion?
This gets us back on to making that final decision on Cherry Street in the spring sometime.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass is 4-0. Number B, some of you got your agenda. We, we voted 3-0 in the agenda meeting to remove this and bring it up in December. There's still some information we're lacking on one of the contracts to make it to our attorney's satisfaction and the town staff. All right, fire sprinklers contract for 304 Black Mountain Avenue.
So as we were getting settled into the new building, it came to our attention through our fire department and our building inspector that we needed to have a sprinkler system in that building so that we could work on the public works equipment and really even have the public works equipment parked in there. So there were really two options. One of them was just to put a sprinkler system in part of the building and then build some firewalls to kind of make the, to separate parts of the building that we were going to work on this equipment on. And then the other one was just to put the sprinkler system throughout the whole building. Cost wise, they ended up being approximately the same. The town received a quote from Wayne Sprinkler System for $117,000, I think it is. The budget amendment is actually for $125, and that's because we anticipate some cost. Jamie's guys are going to do some work on it, but we anticipate we might need to spend a little money to help him out there. But we asked for another quote, and this is a pretty specialized field of business, and we did not get a response from the other company that we were in contact with. So to allow us to really utilize that building as we planned, you know, we need to get that sprinkler system in there. So we're coming before the board with, just to get approval on this contract.
These folks can also, because they're doing the hotel down there, can just, they're, they're in the neighborhood.
Yep. Excellent point. That's how, yeah, yes.
Any other discussion, comments?
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to pass is 4-0. All right. We have the Avotum Utility Improvement Infrastructure Contract.
So this has been talked about a little bit tonight already and for a long time. Obviously, the funding that we had in place was from Golden Leaf Foundation, 2016, $775,000. And the EDA awarded us $827,580 in 2017 for this work, for the utility improvements, for the Avotum infrastructure. And we've got a motion for consideration here, but we'd like to amend that to say something a little bit different according to our attorney. We need to award the contract, but we need to let the town manager execute, complete the contract after we get our bonds and insurance from the contractor. Once this is approved this evening, he'll have 10 days to do, to do so, to get the certificates and the insurance and bonds, and they hopefully will proceed by the end of this month.
Sort of about a year project. Motion to approve as amended.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass is 4-0. All right, we're coming to our public hearing phase of our agenda. We have a public hearing on closing a flat portion of Wolf Creek Drive, and I have a motion to open a public hearing. Passes 4-0, okay. Jennifer, if you'll come up first and explain.
Good evening, Mayor Alderman. Angela's going to put a map up on the screen for you. So this is a right-of-way closure request from Shane Penager, his mother and his wife. They own the three parcels that you see outlined in turquoise, and they are petitioning to close the portion you see outlined in red. It is currently just a grassy area that is right now being maintained as yard. It's not paved. I don't know that it has ever been paved. Mr. Babilia, who owns the property, it's kind of outlined, it looks dotted right now for some reason, but you see the call out there, owns Black Mountain Center for Technology. And that piece is actually in the county. So that little strip you see is actually not ours. And then you see two properties down where Chapman's Cove subdivision is. And they are actually putting a right-of-way access in their property to eventually get over onto the county property. This one passed Planning Board 6-0. There were no issues with it on the planning board level. I do believe, however, Fire Chief Steve Jones has a couple of notes for you. But do you have any questions before I step down? Thank you.
All right, time to time it.
Sorry about that, Jennifer.
It's okay.
Thank you, Boarder Alderman and Town Manager and Mayor Collins. I've been a resident in Black Mountain here, Wolf Creek Drive, for 12 years on home there. I think this is sort of not a tough decision. I don't see any downsides of this. Really, this came about, the impetus was that I approached Jennifer Tipton and was curious if that law was for sale. The last 12 years, primarily, I've just been a steward of the land, taking care of that space, minding my borders, and it was just the way it was. That kind of led to asking about that place, which was, we came to a petition for the road closure. I have a six-year-old son, about 12 homes on the street. There are at least seven children, ages three to seven. The reason I tell you this is I have a lot of playground equipment in my yard. I was hoping to move it into that space, sort of make a playground. But there is no detrimental, no detriment to public interest. As you said, the planning board voted for it. There's no current utilities or future utilities planned. I don't think it affects the adopted, any adopted town plans. I mowed that space, I have for 12 years with my neighbor until he sold the property across the street to my widowed mother. So she now lives across the street from us. So we kind of own the, you know, as you can see there. That said, I'd just like to take somewhat of an ownership of that place and appreciate if you consider passing the road closure. Thank you.
Is there any discussion by board members?
I would, you know, our process is that we like to rely on our planning board and unless there's good reasons not to do that, it's past 6-0, so I just.
Well, Steve, did you have, Jennifer said that you might have something you wanted to add to this.
The fire inspector and I both went out and looked at Wolf Creek, at this area. We're opposed to you closing that right away. And the reason being is that one little strip of land there is about 30 feet long that runs up to Blue Ridge Assembly. You see the David Babilia property there. If that were to ever be made a road or whatever, we could extend Wolf Creek to come out that way. Right now, if any of those properties at the end of Wolf Creek, or any property on Wolf Creek catches on fire, we're going to have to shut down the whole road all the way from Greenbrier to there to lay hose line. So that means nobody on Wolf Creek's leaving until we're done, because the hose will be in the road. And part of the people on Blue Ridge Road will be stuck until we're done. If, in the future, I mean, I'm not, I'm thinking, I mean, how long's that been there? You know, those were there for a reason, and we look at every one of them. I believe this is the only one I've ever, I've ever had opposition to, just because there is a chance to tie that back into Blue Ridge Assembly someday and maybe run a water line. They're going to develop that on the county side, and there are some programs out for subdivisions for firewise, and in order to be a firewise community, you have to have two, two sets of entry and exit. And, you know, maybe someday they'll put a road up that 30-foot right away, because that's about all that's good for the road. And then the town would have the opportunity to tie those together and make the fire protection and improve the water on Wolf Creek even more. So for that reason, the fire department opposes you closing that right away.
Did you speak to the planning board about it?
My, Jennifer took my, you told the planning board about my opposition, I'm sure.
We did, yes.
Yes. They got a letter from the fire inspector.
They're aware of it.
Yes, they are.
Very good.
Please come and address that, of course, Jennifer.
Yes, the planning board was made aware of it. Dana Babilia was also in attendance at that planning board meeting, speaking. He's a managing partner of Black Mountain Center for Technology. Currently, they have no plans to ever develop a road right through there. They currently have planned three other points of entry into that subdivision that'll be on the county side. So this was not one of those. So the planning board didn't take that into consideration.
Jennifer, what's the length?
Approximately 122 feet in length. I think it's 20, 25, maybe?
20, 25 feet wide?
Mm-hmm. That may be pushing it a little bit.
And it's not developed or anything now? Nobody's using it, driving through it or anything?
No. The pavement stops just in front of Mr. Penager's gate, so just about where that, where the red line starts. And as far as I know, it's never been paved. So it's just a grassy area, there's some gravel on it, but nobody's driven on it. At least in my 13 years here, nobody's driven on it.
Nobody's been driving on it for, you know, 12 years?
No, it's like a terminus once the asphalt ends. We see bears go through there.
So you had, you talked to Mr. Babilia?
Yes.
And he's got no issues with?
No, and Mr. Babilia here, he invites him to come up and just reiterate that. That's up to you, but yes. Thank you.
Got a motion to close the public hearing.
Pardon me. Someone is asking, just see if they can speak. Yes, ma'am, public comment, go ahead.
Hi, Lisa Milton. I serve on the planning board, and we did receive the letter that the, that the town was against it. My understanding was, it was not explained like Chief Jones explained it this evening, so that it was clear as to the accessibility, what had to be closed down. If we had understood that with regards to accessibility of running a line to be able to fight fires for the other properties there on Wolf Creek Drive, I know for myself, I can say I would not have voted for it, but I did not understand how it compromised the fire department's ability to access the property. The letter just basically said they were against it, but it didn't really go into detail as to the properties and how they would be impacted with the closure of this in the event of a fire. So just to clarify that, I think our board was maybe not quite clear on the true ramifications that it makes to the fire department, so. ramifications that it makes to the fire department, so, thank you.
Anyone else in line? Discussion?
Do you follow up to that one? And with all due respect, certainly, the letter that was, I believe, sent to the town does clearly state that if Chief Jones explained that a fire occurred in this area, it likely have to shut down access road, Blue Ridge Road, and Wolf Creek Drive, so those areas were pointed out in the letter to the town for consideration. Thank you.
Mr. Bobelia? Would you like to address this?
I don't have any comment. We're indifferent. We signed the petition for the closure in support, and certainly understand the fire department's concerns. We don't ever intend to develop that strip of property, so it's not a concern.
All right. Any further discussion with the board members? Got a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 4-0. Do I have a motion to adopt R. 1823 as presented or amended?
22. 1822.
1822, 23.
22.
I've got 23 on this, I'm sorry. All right, thanks for telling me.
Yes, I would make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Or 1022.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Passes 3-1. Public hearing protects amendments to floodways and non-encroachment areas. Public hearing to close an open portion of First Street, 1823. Got a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jennifer, if you would, you can lighten this here.
So here you have a request for a road closure for First Street, and this is off of Blue Ridge Assembly Drive, it is not First Street off of Montry Road. This request was brought to us by Andrew Bobelia and Charles and Catherine Clegg and Andrew's wife Kirsten. The Bobelias own the first two properties outlined in turquoise, then you have Mr. Penley, Ms. Groves, and then come around, and you have, the Cleggs own four properties, and then Mr. Sobel at the end of the adjacent alleyway. They are requesting to close the entire portion of that right-of-way, which measures approximately 274 feet in length. I don't know how, how wide it is, I didn't measure that part. There, Mr. Bobelia has agreed to put in a 15-foot easement for accessing utilities for everybody to use, and for it to connect to that existing alleyway, because that was not part of the closure. Mr. Penley did sign off on the closure. Ms. Groves, her property is currently in a trust, and her executor was not comfortable signing until it went into an estate, but that could be quite some time from now. But he would still have access to use that 15-foot easement if he so chose to do, but he also has access off a lower lane. Currently, it's just a wooded area, and just want it for a driveway access.
Planning board?
Planning board passed it 6-1. We had one that did not approve it, or recommend it, I should say.
And do you mind, what, the one in opposition, was there, can you remember their reasons?
I, I can't, but she's here if you'd like to, she can, she can let me know. I don't have my minutes with me, and that's where I write everything down, so, I don't have it in my head. But it, it may have been because we didn't close the alleyway in the same thing, but I'll let her speak to that, I don't want to put words in her mouth. Do you have anything else for me?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion by the board members? I'll call for public comment. Excuse me.
Mr. Mayor, board members, town staff, thank you. This is a new process for my family and I, and I know you undertake a lot of road closures. We submitted this in May, it's now six months later, and we just want to thank the town staff and the planning board. I think there were some unexpected hurdles along the way. The Groves' property, they were concerned about access, and again, I want to clarify that we will put a 15-foot access point, both so that the Groves could access from the rear if they ever needed to, but also so that Mr. Sobel would never be restricted without access down that existing alleyway. The Cleggs, the Penleys, and our family respectfully request that you approve the right-of-way closure. It's unused wooded land that mostly borders the Clegg property and our property there. Thank you.
Any discussion with the board members? Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I hear a motion to adopt Resolution R. 1823 as presented?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 4-0. Public hearing protects amendments to floodways and non-encroachment areas. Okay.
That's you.
Ms. Jennifer.
Can you open it?
Yes, ma'am. First of all, do we have any public comment from anyone? Do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 4-0. All right, Jennifer.
So tonight, before you, you have a text amendment for floodways and non-encroachment areas, and this is to add back in language that we feel was inadvertently left out in the 2010 Land Use Code update. There were two sections in there, and planning board tweaked them just a little bit, so that they now say, "No vegetative debris, such as wood piles, downed trees, or branches, which could cause blockage of culverts or bridges, or which could otherwise create a hazard during a flood event, shall be permitted to accumulate within the floodway areas." And the second is, "No discarded or stored items, such as abandoned vehicles, white goods, tires, or miscellaneous debris, shall be allowed to accumulate within the floodway areas." So on your map, kind of the turquoise area in the middle, that is what is considered the floodway area. It's also where you can't build anything, and this is, it's a good mechanism for our floodplain administrator to go through before, during, or after major rain events, flood events, and get people to move things out that they may have inadvertently placed in there. Realizing that this will not be an everyday occurrence, and it also will not be an everyday enforcement, we don't have the staff to do that. So we do have some people that are going to be legally non-conforming, and that they've had things there for years and years and years, they just can't add to that. But otherwise, it's mainly, you know, if the tree falls, get the tree out, we don't want it washing down the bridge and potentially washing the bridge out. And this one, I believe, passed, it was either 6-0 or 7-0, the planning board, I can't remember how many members we had that night. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from her?
No.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any public comment? Seeing none, is there any discussion by the board members? Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I hear a motion to adopt the statement of consistency as presented?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance 0-18-06 as presented?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
4-0, approved. Public hearing protects amendments to home occupations. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 0-18-07?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
4-0. Jennifer, again.
So before you is a text amendment to home occupations, and it's one sentence, and it just asks that, or requires, that home occupations shall complete a home occupation application that includes zoning verification. Multiple reasons for this. One, we can verify that they are meeting all the requirements of the home occupations, which you do have in your packet. Two, if we get questions or complaints about them, it makes it easier for us to be able to respond, rather than having to track these businesses down, because they may not know that they need an application, or may not know that they're even breaking any rules. Third is that it helps us keep track of the home occupations. We feel that we probably do have a lot in town, it just gives us a sense of what we've got going on in town. This one passed 6-1 at the planning board. Any questions?
Okay. Do we have any public comment? All right, is there any discussion by the board members?
No, me.
Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do I hear a motion to adopt the statement of consistency as presented?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Through 4-0. Do I hear a motion to adopt the ordinance 0-18-07 as presented?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, communication from staff. Lon Sneed?
I have nothing more this evening, Mayor.
Yeah, just a couple of things real quick. Just a reminder, our town offices will be closed this Thursday, the 22nd, and Friday, the 23rd, for Thanksgiving holidays. Our tree lighting for here in town will be Friday, this Friday, at 5 o'clock, Town Square, and reminder that trash is one day behind due to the Thanksgiving holiday, so, that's all from me.
Communication from the board?
Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Couple of things, Mr. Mayor. Going back to the tennis courts, I appreciate the folks from the Tennis Association coming out tonight, I appreciate the comments that were made. I've asked Judy Eubanks and Josh and Josh, our town staff, to meet with her again, and to put up some concrete plans for improvements, pretty much looking at what's needed to be done, the cost estimates, timeline for improvements, what have you, and let's start building on that so we can get ready for our next budget year, where we can go ahead and get that property improved, and that is town property, issued by town citizens, and we need to take care of it, just like we do any other part of town property. Chief Jones, enjoy this, sir. I wish you well in your retirement. You have done a lot of good things for this town, for your department, and it's been a pleasure to work with you and your staff, and we wish you the very best in your retirement.
I think that comes from all of us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I just want to say, thanks, everybody, for staying with us this entire meeting, and thank you for all the input, and certainly, I, I hope that you will continue to come to our meetings, and to ask us hard questions, and to certainly hold us accountable for our actions.
All right, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Oh, yeah.
Wait a minute, sorry. I retract that motion. All right, I need a motion to go into closed session, to consult with the town attorney as permitted, NCGS 143-318.11A3. Need that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.